Good evening. I'll now call the City of Cannon Falls City Council Meeting for October the 3rd to order. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Abidi?
Present.
Althoff?
Present.
Carpenter?
Here.
Dalton?
Here.
Mattson?
Here.
McCusker?
Yeah.
And Mayor Robinson.
Here. All please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the City Council Meeting. Before we move on to the agenda, just want to remind council that we need to try to stay as close to Robert's Rules of Orders possible, that being recognized by the Chair before we speak. And we're here to work together, folks, so let's work together to do the best for the citizens. This time, Chair will take a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ken, second by John. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. That moves us on to Item 5 this evening, Public Input. Citizens may speak to issues not on the agenda. Before speaking, please give your name and address for the minutes and please limit your comments to three minutes.
Hi. I got a few lots right here across the railroad tracks. And I came to City Hall well, back in July. And I talked to Maroni about possibly using plastic pipe PVC rather than ductile iron. Asked him what the city's position was. I know that the city has used plastic pipe previously. Two weeks and two days later, I came back to City Hall because I hadn't gotten an answer. Now, he claimed that the city engineer didn't get a hold of him. I don't know what went wrong, but I still wasn't too worked up about it. I'm really not that whipped up yet. But I went to the Public Works and I couldn't get on the agenda. And I don't understand why that's not possible. This is Cannon Falls and shouldn't be that big a deal. But I still wasn't in a panic, so I waited another month, another two weeks, excuse me. It was only two weeks later. When I got on the agenda and we discussed it and we found out that there's really nothing wrong with plastic pipe, even though the engineer isn't a fan of it, nor is the Public Works Director, the PVC works fine. So I'm trying to get permission and Ron, who's not here, suggested at that meeting that I have, I pay to have my engineer draft a proposal to your engineer. And come on, really? I just want to know if I can, if my contractor wants to use the plastic pipe, I don't know. I'm not doing it. I don't do sewer and water. But he wants to use PVC. Claims it's better. I don't know. I'm a cement man.
Use it in our streets here.
Yeah. And, and, and so, and I know certainly I don't want to pay an engineer to ask a simple question. It's tough enough to make ends meet. So I'm asking if you would.
I will find out about it and I'll get back to you.
Okay. Well, I think this body right here, I don't think we need to study this. I think this body needs to vote on it. Either you're going to allow it or you're not. And, and, and as long as I'm here, this fiasco that went on a couple of weeks ago and people blaming other people for ordering around help and all this, and I talked to you, Mr. Mayor, and you told me you'd get to the bottom of it. And I don't think there's been a whole lot done with it, but I want to explain a couple of things. I had a brother that graduated high school with him and him, was damn good friends with him, and Dave Pagel. I've known these guys all my life. You are never going to convince me that Leroy McCusker ordered anybody to do anything. Just ain't happening. Now, I, on the other hand, tell a lot of people to do things all the time. And I order people around and I've even ordered Dave Pagel around for the last year and a half or so when I saw it fit. But he don't listen to me. So just so you know, it's a bunch of poppycock. You guys should get it straightened out.
Babe, I got a question. Like in the Public Works, like I mentioned, you know, that is so old.
2002.
Yeah, okay. And we got to update. I mean, there's things that, like this, you know, it's been, it's been done.
In your street width.
And the street width and that, you know, and we go to Greg and he says, well, it's in your policy. And I'm going, no, no, you know, he's got to be able to see this and say, wait a minute, you know, just like that street over there, it was wider, now it's narrower and it's a pain. But we've got to update it. There's no question.
This is absolutely, absolutely.
Part of, part of.
And it's got to make sense. And so, I know that Maroni told me that I have to get to this body to get an answer and you folks would have to vote to allow me to do that. Now, I can't get a recommendation from the Public Works. And Ron Johnson, I don't know where he comes up with this because there's no policy or no rule anywhere that says that he gets to decide that I get to have a proposal written by my engineer. I'm not going to ask him to do that. And I'm certainly not going to pay him to do it. I want you guys to decide this.
Tom, is that, I mean, what says that we can't use, I mean, we've used it all over the, we've used, we have used PVC all over the city in the last three or four projects. And we, and we even, okay, didn't we use it up here?
No.
No one's saying it can't be used.
Why not? I mean, it's cheaper and it's better.
We talked about this in the commission, okay? Yes, we may need to update the policy. It's always best to have some things updated. Oh, I don't know, like a city charter. So yes, I'm in favor of updating. We can work on that. But in terms of solving this problem today, what we discussed at the Public Works Commission, and I was there too, what I recall coming out of that was that the policy is the ductile, whatever. But departures can be made from policy. We've done it before. We can do it again. All it takes is something, we need to have something in writing. We need to have you saying, you as the property owner, saying, yes, I understand this is against policy. I know that there are risks inherent in it and that that's why it's not written in the policy that we're going to do everything that way. I agree to take responsibility for that. Please grant me approval. And then we, then we consider whether or not to grant approval. It doesn't have to be written by the engineer. I'm sure that that would probably be the ideal, but we need to have something that says we are okay with the idea of departing from a policy that was arrived at after due consideration, not by us.
Well, I've got a pen and I bet I can find a piece of paper. Do you want me to write this out for you?
You could have done that weeks ago, but yes, go ahead.
Well, why does it have to be in writing? I, I don't get that it, why does it, you've got, this thing is being taped, isn't it? There's a police officer. He can attest to what I'm telling you.
Let's, let's get it and just put it in writing, babe, and we'll get it taken care of and we can move forward. And then we'll work on the policies. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else wishing to address the council under the public input this evening?
Well, can I comment? We're talking about Leroy's situation two weeks ago. Let me just, let's put this to rest. I was really disappointed at that meeting. I mean, Tom, first of all, if I ever got a problem with Public Works, I call you or I come to the Public Works and talk about it. You sent out an email that didn't include Leroy or Morris that I'm aware of criticizing him for what I think is doing his job. If there was loose gravel on Third Street, I would have done the same thing Leroy did. I would have complained. If I saw a City Works person, I would have told him about it. I think that email was out of line. I think you owe Leroy apology. And I think there's a couple of council members here that owe him an apology too.
I felt at the time, that was the second time it happened. A call was made to our office to open the porta-pots back up when we talked about it as a group at Public Works. We talked about this, but after I was told to open a mic up. I have to work for one person. I can't take directive for, one person's telling me, don't do it. One person said, do it, do this, don't do this. All I want is one answer, even if it's a wrong answer.
And I realize there's protocol, but this is Cannon Falls. We're not Rochester. We all get along here. I mean, I would have done the same thing he did. I would have probably complained if there was loose gravel. It was probably a hazard going across the bridge, but don't criticize. He's doing his job. He's a councilman.
That employee came to me and said, well, he told me to do this. I passed it on to you.
I don't know that just because you would do the same thing makes that, that that's necessarily the bar. I don't think any of us should direct a city employee to do anything.
I'm sure he was just making a suggestion. I would have done the same thing. He's a councilman. He's doing his job.
But the suggestion should be sent to either the city manager or to Tom, the Director of Public Works, rather than the employee.
What if you want to get it done?
Doesn't matter.
That does matter.
Then, then do it yourself.
And you get it done in Cannon Falls. And I can assure you of that, sir.
Okay. That, that's, that's done. It's been brought up. We'll discuss this in Personnel Policy and Personnel going forward at this time.
I'm making apologies.
That's up to the individual. This time, the Chair, the, we'll go into the consent agenda. Items on this area of the agenda may be adopted or they may be removed and placed on the business area of the agenda for discussions, discussion purposes before approving. For the folks at home, I'll read the consent agenda. Item A is the just and correct claims for the accounting period ending September the 28th, 2017. Item B are the meeting minutes for the September 19th, 2017 City Council Meeting. Item C are set the budget workshops. Item D, approve MinDOT signage for Truck Highway 52. Item E is Resolution 2299, accepting a monetary donation for the fire department from Gemini. Item F, second reading and adoption of Ordinance 354, mending Chapter 152 of the Cannon Falls City Code, the zoning ordinance concerning the zoning map and zoning classification for a specific property. And Item G, approve modification of premise to rental loco current liquor license. At this time, the Chair will take a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted.
So moved.
Okay, I have a motion. Is there a second? Are there any items anybody wishes to bring down?
Yes, I'd like to move D.
Okay, Item D will become Item 7A.
I'll pull A.
And Item A will become Item 7B. Any other items? If not, Chair take a motion to approve the consent agenda minus Item A, which is just and correct claims, which will become Item 7B, and Item D, which is approve MinDOT signage for Truck Highway 52, which is 7A.
Do you want more on the floor? Do you want to start the countdown if you're not in second?
Yep, we can do that. So I'll need a new motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Minus Items A and D.
Second.
Motion by Ken, second by Cedar. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Okay, moves us on to Item 7A, the MinDOT signage.
Yep, I brought that down. I'm, I'm really glad to see this. And I just wanted to publicly thank whoever it was that finally got MinDOT to listen to what, what we've been asking for, for quite a while. The businesses out there have been asking for signage. Council members have been asking for signage and it hasn't gone anywhere until right now. So I don't know if it was Dave or Sarah or Dave Olson or a group, but I just want to publicly thank you guys for getting that job done. That's the only reason I brought it down.
Any other discussion on the signage? I just want to thank, again, I know it's been a long, hard road to get it. MinDOT's finally come to the table. It might not be exactly everything we want, but at least we've got something out of them. So with that, if there's no further discussion, Chair will take a motion to approve the MinDOT signage for Highway 52.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mike, second by John. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. That moves us on back to Item 7B, which is just and correct claims. John?
I just, I just wanted to pull that just for, I, I've been going through this expenditure budget in the last couple of months and it's gotten better. I guess I'm still got a problem with the department heads got credit cards. And you see a lot of this, US Bank, they're buying stuff, a lot of stuff out of town. I've been told by one department head that saving the city a little money by using the credit card out of town. But still, I, I still believe a lot of this stuff, this stuff's got to be bought locally. And I, I'd like to see it come to an end or otherwise maybe we should talk about taking the credit cards away. That's the only comment.
Maybe some businesses locally need to be a little more competitive.
Well, tell me this. If you're using a credit card and you're going to Menard's Sands Club, are you doing it on city time? I mean, you're saving money, you know, it's cost money to go out of town to buy this stuff. I think that probably negates anything price increase.
Sometimes I've had businesses, when we go buy it, deliver it for no additional charge. So I don't know. I'm not paying that, that close attention how it's working here.
I just wanted to bring it up. I'll keep watching it.
Well, I mean, sometimes, I mean, I think some of them have contracts. I mean, and I mean, if it's Menard's and stuff, we probably need to look at that because I know there's some places that have state contracts that people are buying on. I mean, at times. And we do save money when we're using state contracts because we are allowed to do that for certain things. But there are certain things that, you know, we might have, we may need to look at to say, okay, is it something that could be bought?
Well, that's a good point. And Tom mentioned that too. Remember that we were talking about a power washer that you had a state contract for?
I do see when I look through the things tonight, some of the things bought by other departments were bought with a credit card, but they were bought locally. And like when we get something at Menard's, we typically do it on our time after work. One of our guys lives in Red Wing. I live in Northfield. So we don't make a trip during the day over to get it. It's usually typically, that's what it is. And it's something that we need such a volume of that we can't, we need nine of something, not one of something. So. Okay. John, I will say, since you brought it up a month or so ago, I think it's better.
It is better.
And I think people will continue to, to watch it. I mean, I think we need to spend as much locally as possible and keep the, the dollars in Cannon Falls. At that, Chair will take a motion to approve the just and correct claims.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mike, second by Ken. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. That moves us on to reports. Sam, do you have anything tonight? Tom?
I'll just highlight a little bit of the Public Works report. I'm kind of losing my voice here, so bear with me. A couple of things we discussed tonight, adding another downtown handicap parking in the, what I'll call the chuggers block to get one on that end of the street. We discussed the vacant lot, which I will email you all on, vacant lot that a party wants to donate to the city, which is down by the trail. We discussed that. And a little bit of development up on 60th, 68th Avenue Way. There's currently a house being put up there in Cedar Hills. And a party came tonight wanting to possibly put up two or three more. And we'll get the answers he needed. At that time, we were told that there was an agreement placed with the county that they would not allow the parcels to be individually parceled off. We found that now that is not true, but.
May not be true.
It may not be true. And we also discussed the recycling contract. We will get quotes on, on that as well and bring them forward. That's all I have. We are finishing up the patching around town. We're doing some leaf sweeping. We'll start flushing water mains next Monday. That goes on for about two, two and a half weeks. You may see discolored water. And bear with us, may have some pressure drops certain times, but we will get through that in the next two, two or three weeks.
Tom, I have a question. Down at the fairgrounds that use again or whatever it is, I was down there to the recyclables the other day and it's kind of trashy again. Did we ever talk to them about?
I talked to them and then they stepped it up. They'd come and clean stuff up more. And Joel can maybe help me out on this. We, prior to them even coming, we, they'd leave the trash there anyway. And then the county would kind of leave it. We'd kind of, well, I guess we inherited. Now, at least the company does pick it up. When I got after them, they did come twice. So we cleaned it up a little better. After the citywide rimmage sales, it kind of morphs into a big pile again. So it is an option that we could eliminate it altogether. But that does give, gets rid of the outlet of getting rid of clothes and shoes and what people want to do. So I guess.
For what it's worth, I have heard from the US Again people that although they have to do that sort of collection of trash, that's not clothing, their purpose is clothing and shoes. But they have to do those collections literally everywhere those boxes are. It's not limited to Cannon Falls. And they fill up dumpsters and dumpsters of this stuff all the time. And they still manage to make their ends meet and turn the profit that they want to make, even with factoring in that disposal fee. I'm sure they, they probably won't be happy that I just shared all that. But anyways, they're not going to bail on us just because they have to pick up the trash.
Also just FYI, I don't know if you're aware, but we do get a small revenue sharing check from them quarterly. It's maybe $30 to $40 or so. So they do give a little bit back to the city for us allowing them to have that there.
Thank you. Tomorrow morning, we'll be doing the fall walk to school. We'll be meeting up in the city parking lot around 7:00 and at 7:15, we'll start walking to school. So if anybody wants to join, feel free. I'll be down there with the day shift officer and we'll be escorting everybody down to the school. Thursday morning, 10:30, we have coffee, cops and conversation at the bakery. So feel free, if anybody's around that time, stop in. And then Friday is homecoming. So there'll be a lot of traffic around downtown. Just hoping everybody can drive safe, keep the phones down and drive the speed limit. So, thank you.
The parade's downtown Friday too, isn't it?
Yeah. The parade's going to be, I think we said 1:30. And that's going to follow the parade route from the high school toward, to the football field.
Okay.
Just to update you a little bit on the credit card usage. We've actually had two people use it now, which is pretty good, being that we haven't really done a lot of advertising yet. It is out on our website. It's on our homepage. There's a link to the credit card company. We did put it out on the city's Facebook page and it will be noted on the utility billings that are going out this month and we'll keep it on there for a few months. So.
And that's for water bills, not for the ones John was talking about.
That's correct.
Sure. Just to elaborate a little bit about the handicap parking spot downtown. We had had a request from a business on the east, east side of Fourth Street to have an additional spot. And this would be on the, the non-chuggers block. What do you call that? The other block? The all-fours block. We determined that the rearrangement of flip-flopping the sides of the street was not attainable to accommodate that request. But in reviewing our handicap accessibility on our main street, we determined that there would be a need for the chuggers block. And that it makes more sense to have it on that side of the street, on the chugger side, rather than the bank side, because the bank is probably going to have some off-street handicap accessible parking of their own. So it's, we're looking at the Beacon losing a spot. So you're welcome. And that will be, that's our recommendation there. And then I think there was one other thing we were going to talk about. Oh, was that it? Was that all I was supposed to talk about? I think so. Sorry, I'll pass.
No, nothing.
Leroy?
Boy, I'm going to be in trouble when I get home because I got a word from the boss when I came tonight. Do not, I'm not supposed to speak. But I, after the last council meeting, I wanted to bring up the fact that I don't see the doom and gloom that's going on in Cannon Falls. I see the good things. And I didn't know if the council members had seen. At our last council meeting, I went out on the porch about 5:00, decided I had to start reading papers for the night. And I turned the TV on and Channel 2 is talking about sustainable agriculture, parks and recreation. And I wasn't paying any attention to it. And I was reading my papers over and all of a sudden, they said in Cannon Falls. And I look up at the TV and there's downtown Cannon Falls. And they go on to talk about how sustainable agriculture and how sustainable recreation tie in together a lot of times. And they went on to point out the beautiful trails down here, the beautiful river, the things that Cannon Falls has done with canoeing and volleyball parks. And we're talking about Cannon Falls being an example for other cities for sustainable recreation. And I just, I was kind of shocked by it. I was kind of excited by it. On the other hand, I always tell people when they ask me what's going on with our parking and our canoe and stuff and some of our problems that we have to deal with. I said, well, you can thank Frank and Amelia from Channel 4 for that because they put on the thing on TV and they let the word out that Cannon Falls is kind of a cute little place here. The problem is, we got, where Leroy is and many other council members don't agree with me, I would like the traffic to keep going by and I would just like to stay a bed and breakfast town. So if I ever get a chance to meet Frank and Amelia, I'm going to tell them that before you come next time, you call me first. Because I don't want too much promoting going on here. I like it the way it is. So that's my only statement tonight and I'm sure I'm in trouble when I get home. Thank you.
It was nicely said. I like it.
No, I have nothing.
Me either.
Well, the only thing I've got is the bomber's got homecoming this week, so everybody be safe out there. And with that, the Chair will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.